There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, item on the, first item on the agenda is to approve the list of medical examiner investigators, and we have Jamie Webker, the director of Carroll County ambulance here this morning to discuss this with us. Good morning, Jamie. Is your mic on? So just hold the button down.
Now you're on.
Thank you.
Um, like I said, I sent out an explanation of kind of what I, the names and, and what I was looking at as far as like the mileage goes. Um, I know back in two thousand twenty-one, the ambulance advisory board, um, met and wanted this approved. I don't know if, at that time, if it was denied by the board of supervisors, or if it just wasn't brought up. Um, but I'm looking at revisiting the mileage for the MEs that travel. Basically, what I put in there was for ten miles from their home. We're having troubles getting people that do the medical examinations. And part of the reason is because of the, there's no reimbursement for mileage. There's sometimes where you'll have to drive from, uh, Manning or Manila up to Lanesboro. And you know, there's, there's no reimbursement for that on that side of it. And then as far as the names go, the state requires that they are reapproved by both, uh, the deputy medical examiner and by the board of supervisors every three years. So, um, there's numerous new people on here. Uh, the last time this was done was in two thousand twenty-one, and out of the eight that did it, there's a bunch of those that never did any investigations, so they, they've been removed from the list. And I did reach out to all them to see if they wanted to stay on. And the ones that didn't get back to me, I'd remove them.
And some of these that are on here still have never even done one, correct?
The, anybody that's on here, except for the new ones, has, has done one in the last, um, sixteen months.
Okay.
But the, there's a report writing software that we use called IBS. According to the state, after a year of not using it, they go inactive. Uh, they can be reactivated, but they need the approval here too. Cause there's a couple, there's one on the list that hasn't done one, um, in that's, it just hasn't done one in a twelve month timeframe, but wish to be back on, be continuing to be on the list. And so, uh, he can just get reapproved by you guys, and then they'll reactivate his IBS account.
Jamie, you had mentioned something about anything beyond ten miles. Are you suggesting that they only want reimbursed on anything beyond that ten miles, or all of it?
So if it was up beyond ten miles, then it would be from, for the entire amount. So I'm just saying like for, for myself, um, if I do one in Carroll, there would be no reimbursement for mileage. I mean, I, that's where most of our examinations are at. Uh, but if I have to go to Lanesboro, Breda, um, Toon Rapids.
Then those get reimbursed. Anything that's beyond ten mile.
Right, and it would be, so, um, a new one is, she works full-time for Carroll County ambulance, and she wanted to be a medical examiner. She lives in Manila, um, so if she would come up to Carroll, then that would be reimbursable.
And then you're suggesting just the federal mileage rate, or county still using federal mileage rate?
Yes.
A percentage.
A, a percentage of the federal mileage?
I think it's fifty-eight cents right now. So basically whatever, uh, Carroll County is paying out for mileage is what I would suggest that they get paid for.
Yeah, I see no problem with that whatsoever. Should have been done.
Ten miles of free after that, and it's like, if it's eleven, that's eleven times fifty-eight.
My suggestion would be is if it is over ten miles from their home, the entire amount is, the entire mileage.
Okay.
So if it's nine miles, there's no reimbursement. If it's eleven miles, then the eleven miles get it.
Eleven at fifty-eight cents, whatever that is, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It is kind of structured. I mean, I created a group and, uh, app that we use, I am responding. So, uh, Matt's text goes out via that, and then people call in and say, excuse me, if they can do them. Um, so, and then we take into consideration their response time. So if somebody calls in and says I can be there an hour, um, and then somebody else called in and says I can be there in ten minutes, then the one in ten minutes will be the one doing it. Cause there's times where, you know, we're, we're sitting on scene, like as a medical examiner, you may sit on scene for three to four hours, uh, waiting for different things.
Family.
Family, or a lot of times it's actually response from the funeral home.
And so you're not suggesting changing the two hundred dollar base rate?
The two forty.
No, or the two forty. This discussion is just mileage.
Just mileage.
Yeah, I don't see anybody. Let, let's talk about process for just a second, though. So i- i- it, I don't know, some, where it never happened from two thousand twenty-one. So let's just make sure the process is in place. And, you know, I think the board's comfortable with you, just making sure that they have to apply for it or fill out a form, or do something to where we ensure that they get reimbursed.
Right, well, as far as like the application process is set by the state for being a medical examiner, but it needs approval, the list needs approval from you guys. I know we're, I get all their addresses, I have all that information, so I kind of keep track. If they submit for, for mileage, I'll look at it to make sure that it, it meets the criteria.
And they, they'll have forms and whatever necessary, just so, you know, the auditor can get.
Yeah, um, so generally, like when somebody, somebody will send me any, if somebody doesn't, uh, medical examiner call, what the process I have is that they send me an email with the name of the decedent and the date of investigation. And then also I'll have them add the address now. Um, then I go, I go through it all, I keep track, but that way then I submit it to, to Courtney for payment.
Okay.
What brought this up was, there was recently a claim with mileage on it, which we had never seen before. So then I contacted Jamie, and he pulled up the minutes from the advisory board we were on, and it just never got communicated to the board to become policy.
Yeah.
So the base on this is two hundred?
Two hundred and forty now. It was two hundred when they made the change, and then it was to follow the percentage of rate of increase of the wages for the ambulance staff. And it's not, I mean, the medical examiners, I guess it, it's not attached to AMB, to EMS. Um, they're all subcontractors.
It was stagnated a hundred and fifty dollars for many years. Dr. Slattery said, we need to up it, and then keep upping it with.
That was, that was brought to us, what, three years ago, that recommendation by Slattery?
At the same time, yeah, two thousand twenty.
And we've kept up on the incremental increases. We just, the mileage never got codified, so to speak.
Right.
So, we're gonna go to item number one first, and approve, asking for approval of the list of medical examiner, examining inspector, um, investigators. So that would be item number one, which is the list that he had sent out. Correct, the names on the list. We'll just be approving that first.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second item would be to discuss or approve medical examiner investigators mileage reimbursement of whatever percentage currently the board of supervisors approves for any other mileage that we reimburse, and currently it's fifty-eight cents.
And once again, so moved.
Second.
You want to do that, the ten miles?
Well, again, just to clarify, if it's within ten miles, there's no mileage reimbursement. But if it's eleven miles, they get paid for all eleven miles.
Correct.
I mean, ideally, any mileage would be beneficial, but most of the time, they probably wouldn't put in for two miles, you know what I'm, that's, that's kind of why I set that ten mile. But that's completely up to the board, but I've got a list at ten, and I think that would be.
Yeah, if they're okay with that, you're okay with that, we're okay with that. Or my motion is okay with that.
There was a motion and a second. Any other clarification or discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Did you say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Have a big week. Well, be safe.
Okay, item number three is Rolling Hills Mental Health Region Property Discussion, and I'm gonna go ahead and let Gene kind of spearhead this conversation.
This conversation in regard to Rolling Hills properties is due to the board meeting we had Wednesday. As you are probably most are aware, the region will become, uh, will dissolve on June thirtieth of next year. Currently, the Rolling Hills has two properties, one in Sack City that is utilized by Plains Mental Health, and they have a property up at Sioux City that's utilized by, um, utilized by, uh, Sulan Mental Health. So we are planning on disposing of these two properties. Well, that was discussed, but we have some people on the Rolling Hills Board thinks that we should let them properties go for nothing, and so we maintain the services. And I can see part of that reasoning. But according to the twenty-eighty agreement that was signed, if ever, when these properties, if these properties were to be dissolved, they're disposed of, the original price is supposed to come back to original counties, which Carroll County is one of them, the dollars are supposed to. And I've advocated that we need to still give something for those properties. We not, doesn't, do we do not necessarily need to get the, this whole price back what we got invested in them? But I have run into some resistance there, and so it's been brought up that every, every board is supposed to talk about, including the not, the members that do not have a seat on the board. Now, you remember that all members do not have a seat on that board, so they've sent a letter out to all the other supervisors. We're supposed to have the discussions on this. So I have been, uh, and these people, the Rolling Hills and, or not Rolling Hills, but, uh, Sulan Mental Health and Plains Mental Health do not think they should pay anything for them. And I asked them, I said, well, you surely got some money to pay something for them. And my, the response I got back was that they are operating on a twenty-eight to thirty-day cash reserves, that's it. And I suppose that's due to their medical, the reimbursement rates they're getting back. I questioned if that was true. I asked my CEO later on a different date, and she said she did believe that was a true statement. Well, I was thinking about more, and someone asked me a question, so I did proceed to ask the question of our CEO as of Friday. What are they paying for rent for these? They're not paying anything. So now I hear they're paying nothing, and then they expect these properties back for nothing. And I understand that we want to keep those services. But I think there should be something, some sort of reimbursement. I'm not saying full, full rate, but that's why I'm having this discussion. Get your guys' feedback. I am sure there's a lot of other human services agencies like Carrying Hearts, uh, you name them, New Opportunities, they would love to have properties that they ain't paying rent on. So I feel that there's a little injustice here, and I want your guys' feedback.
Gene, how many, how many, uh, counties are involved?
There's, um,
Was nine.
Yeah, there's more than now.
Yeah, it's twelve, I think.
They, yeah. Okay, there's Carroll, Crawford, Calhoun, SAC, Ida, Cherokee, BV, and Woodbury. I think that's it.
And Humboldt and Pocahontas.
Who, who?
Humboldt.
Oh, yeah, and Humboldt and Pocahontas came on later on.
So, um, how much money do we put into it? It's on, I don't know.
Well, originally, I think there was sixty-eight thousand put into the property at SAC City, and the three hundred and some thousand on the property in, um, Woodbury County. Now, they've said that, uh, the meeting we had, they said Woodbury paid for that property twice, and I don't know how they did that, but something with one that was switched over from different regions. So I, I guess I'm asking for your guys' feedback.
Did, did the, um, Rolling Hills Board vote on this?
Well, that's the other thing. So the, the board has to decide on this. According to twenty-eighty agreement, the board, whatever the board decides, you know, whatever they vote on will be the, the action they take. The mem, the members that are of the twenty-eighty agreement that are not on the board do not have a say in it. They can put some input in it, but they're not gonna be able to vote on it. So they have not voted on it yet. They want to act on it, and the, the thing is, both of these, um, vendors are wanting to have some action done, so they know where they're at. You know, and then there was, there was a discussion about, well, maybe we should sell, give it to them for nothing with a, um, forgivable loan after five years. Well, with this region changing and the whole thing, there's no known, actual known factors of what's gonna happen. There's so many unknowns.
If they have a twenty-eight day reserve, I don't know if they're gonna be in business in five years.
Well, that's just it, I, you know.
Or two months.
My vote's to get, get our money back.
Yeah, mine would be too. Gene, this clearly comes back in my mind. I mean, you remember my prediction on this, that you and Courtney, probably the only people in the room that remember how I felt about regionalization to begin with. And, and then when we twenty-eightied it, I remember how we spent down a lot of our reserves, just so there wouldn't be a, a grab. And, and the, the twenty-eighty had explicit language that upon dissolution.
That's right.
The assets would, I mean, I don't know what there is to argue about. And so, yeah, we need their services. Yep, that's all given, we all agree with that, but the twenty-eighty is the twenty-eighty, that's what we agreed on. That board approved that then, and I would suggest that we reinforce and support that again today. Remember, these are maybe nonprofit agencies, but they're still private entities. And we all know that nonprofit status is another, is, um, just how you do your math. Right?
Correct.
So, um, I would wholeheartedly support that those are sold at auction. I, I would say fair market value. And i- if they want to make them a deal on it, it's like, it's still kind of a slippery slope. I think they need to be sold at fair market value or at auction, and they, they can bid.
Yeah, and I think that, uh, you know, the, the particular one member from BV is the one that's really pushing this. And his idea is that if we would, they wind up selling these properties, that we're gonna lose those services that are in there. And I can see there's probably some logistic or reasoning to that. But I still think they should be paying something for it. I'm not saying we have to get our full v- value back out of it, but at least we should be getting something out of it.
I don't entirely disagree, but you know, what, what's something?
What, yeah.
And half price, three quarter price.
That has to be negotiated, negotiated, I'm sure.
And even if you did give them a deal, there's no guaranteeing they're gonna be in business five years from now.
No, but at least we, we're out of the properties, cause we have to, we have to dissolve it. And these, these properties were paid for by tax dollars out of this county.
Right.
They were extra dollars that we had here at that time.
Okay, so if you add, there's nine roughly counties, then you added two. Do they, do they pay part of this too, or not?
No, the, the, the one building particularly goes back to the orig, the one in SAC, SAC City, goes back to the original counties.
That's what I wondered, yeah.
The Sioux, Sioux City one would go back to, I think, all but Humboldt and Be, uh, uh, Humboldt and Poc, uh, Pocahontas. But if there's any excess over that, then there would be, that would go amongst everybody. I, and I, you know, it's, it's, when I found out Friday, they weren't even paying rent, that just about floored me.
The general mood of, of the room, I mean, could you read the?
It was, it was all over the board. Like I said, one wanted to do forgivable loan, and then there was, um, uh, I'm, so I, I am probably the minority.
Why are they dissolving it?
Because of the regions are dissolving as of, the state's taking over in June thirtieth. And we're the, and then we're the only region that owns property. Because our region at that time was one of the regions that had excess monies, and we did have monies around that we did a good job, and we utilized it. So, I mean, I, uh, and they're moving so fast on this, uh, reorganization, and it's, uh, they're supposed to have the, the RFPs put out, coming in now, and I, I think it's set up for better myself.
Guys, this is a pretty simple matter. I think you auction and we get part of our money back. It's my vote.
Yeah, I see exactly how I feel.
What's the issues, do you think?
I mean, we got tax dollars. Our tax dollars are involved. We need to recoup what we can.
I think, um, those representatives on that board, wherever they're elected from, those citizens need to pay attention, because your taxes are supposed to be providing a service, and if they're willing to just throw away their constituents' taxes, they should probably not be reelected again. So my suggestion is that we try to recoup as much money as we had invested in the property.
But their argument is that we're gonna lose those services.
That's part of life.
Yeah.
Everything costs money.
But I guess my, some of my feeling, my feeling is, I see this when they're not paying any rent.
Yeah.
I know, New Opportunities would love to have buildings that we wouldn't have to pay rent.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we're investing in the communities and things, and and I'm not saying that we're, we're, we're nonprofit too, and it's, it's hard to, and I, I will address, there's an, we've got a for, a very good fortune out there that's happening right now too, but I, I don't think it's fair to the rest of human service organizations.
Well, I appreciate you bringing this to the board and, and wanting our feedback.
And you got a consensus here. We're saying get our money back.
Go try to do as much as the best you can. I understand you're only one vote on that board, but if you could go speak for, on behalf of.
And I will, I will be doing that. Like I said, I was probably the biggest horses we ran up there last Wednesday, but.
You're doing what's right.
Well, it's, to me, it's right. And then when I found out Friday that they're not paying rent, that just, I just.
What do you meet again?
We will be meeting, I think it's a week. No, we're good, we're having a special meeting a week from, uh, this Wednesday, next Wednesday. And that'll be by Zoom. That's the only thing that's bad about that.
Okay.
Is the consensus of this board then is to?
Unanimes, yeah.
Yeah, I'll do my best, but I'm, I'm gonna tell you, I'm probably the minority of it, so. And I know that they did send out letters to the members, although that do not have board members on there.
So my question is, and that twenty-eighty can, we can fight that.
Isn't there some recourse?
There's some recourse, or you, I don't think this is a voting matter on that. That would make sure they know that.
The twenty-eightys, the twenty-eighty. I don't know what we're supposed to vote on.
I haven't read that, but if that's what you're saying.
I'd like to read that too.
Well, there's no.
I remember when we set it up, though.
And I have the one from two thousand nineteen, but it's since been, cause your name's still on it.
Well, and the thing is that since this changed the state code, you know, eliminated, that it only, less than fifty percent of the board could be county supervisors. That's what's got us into this goddamn problem. So we've got so many of these people that are on that board, our service providers, or other people.
And not available to the taxpayer.
Not tonable to taxpayers.
Ouch. When did that happen? Um, at inception it was, and it was.
Two years ago, and, and you are. Carroll County's fortunate to have a representative of, because we were not gonna be one of them originally.
Mm-hmm.
They were gonna be the county of, um, oh, what do you call what, when they provide employment? County of record. They were only gonna have the county of record be board members. And but they, the advisory board came back, said Carroll County's a big enough population, and they have enough vendors of their own that they need to have a board member on this board. And that's the only reason, like, I got to be on that board. Crawford does not have a, a board member. Humboldt does not, SAC does not. There's, so we're just down to, there's only so many of us, because we only could have less than fifty percent be county supervisors. And that was set up by the state again.
But before they go for a vote on that, on the ninth, I would make sure I read that twenty-eighty, cause I don't think, the way you're stating that, I don't think they can vote on it.
It, well, and, and they had, they got clarification from Isaac Moore, uh, lawyer, that says that the way that is set up now, it is up to the board of directors at that time to decide how they dissolve of this. So, but it does state in it, that's a twenty-eight agreement, that there's, the money should come back to the board, to those original ones. If there's any, if there is any, and it says, I think it's, the way I read it in there, if there's any proceeds. So you could do anything you wanted with, as far as that goes.
So I have the twenty-eighty when we had added Woodbury County. But that was from two thousand nineteen. Did we since then update the twenty-eighty? I can't, don't recall doing that.
Here, I, I've got it here. Set, uh, um, I'll just read part of this. IL Code twenty-eighty doesn't specifically say how real property is to be disposed of, but it requires a twenty-eight agreement to specis, specifically the permissible method of, or methods to be employed in accomplishing the apart, the partial or complete termination of the agreement, and for disposal property upon such partial or complete termination. Section three point one, three point four of the Rolling Hills Community Service Region twenty-eight E that has filled, been filed with the Secretary of State on eight twenty-one of two, two thousand twenty-three states. In the event this agreement is terminated, the reg, and the region is dissolved, all property the region shall be delivered, assigned and conveyed to the member counties by a population of each county, member county. Any real property that needs to be acquired or disposed of shall be completed at the discretion of the governing board. The foregoing notwithstanding, in the event any asset, real property owned by the region is sold, the member counties that contribute to the cost of the purchase or improve the property shall first be reimbursed their respective contributed, contribution from the proceeds of such sale. Any proceeds remaining after such reimbursement shall be delivered between all member counties. If this is the most recent version of the twenty-eighty agreement, which it is, it is up to the governing board to decide how to dispose the properties. So I will continue my argument with him, with them, and.
And, and again, there are members of the governing board that are not elected officials. And that's accountable to the taxpayers.
There, there's, there's members that are not on the governing board. There's members that are not on the governing board. Because the state came out with that ruling in, in two thousand twenty-three, that there could not be any more than fifty percent members of supervisor on those boards. And it will be that we would be, the new board that is set up as an advisory board to whatever the, the new regions that are set up. Yeah. So as my world as I determine, this week's been a shit show.
Okay. I think you've got direction from the board to.
Put up a good fight, it's about all you can do.
Yeah, I mean, I've gotta, I gotta argue with them, um. I think the thing that I might, they will change some heads a little bit as I find, that I found out they're not paying any rent. And I don't know how that ever got determined. That was before I was on that board.
They've been given a gift all along.
Yeah, and then didn't they say they can't afford to pay anything for it? My God. You know, a, as far as the SAC property, they think at least they can come with ten thousand bucks, or whatever, you know?
Alright.
And then so if, if we do get anything back out of this, Courtney and I have visited about this, we'll have to put that in a special fund, and they will probably utilize that, put that back to the taxpayers as relief.
You know, if this would ever go to a court of law, the argument would be, which has precedence, the governing board or the twenty-eighty? It, they've created their own argument.
Mm-hmm.
You guys good?
Yeah, not good.
Not good news. Okay.
Alright.
So I've got direction for you.
Yep. Item number four, we will wait about ten seconds or so. At nine-thirty, we are having a public hearing for the Maple River Water System Long-Term Interfund Loan, which would begin, and correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, Courtney, eleven-thirty of twenty-twenty-four. And the amount of ten thousand dollars will be repaid over a ten-year period at two point five percent interest. And it is nine-thirty, so we will go ahead and open up that public hearing. Um, if there's anybody that would like to make a comment, or Courtney, if you received any comments?
No comments.
Anybody else receive any?
No comments. I received a question on it, which I forwarded to Gene, but no comments.
That has nothing to do with the financing of it, but, yeah.
Would you guys like me to go into the financing amounts, or? So on eleven-thirty, twenty-twenty-four, enter, uh, the first payment, which. So on eleven thirty twenty twenty-four, enter the first payment, which would be ninety-four twenty-seven. Obviously, if you guys look through this. Amortization schedule, it'll show in the beginning, just like any loan, typically in the beginning, you're paying more interest than you are principal, but over time. Uh, you'll notice that the interest starts to decrease and principal starts to increase, just for. Public knowledge, the first period, the interest rate will be twenty eighty-three, and principal will be seventy-three forty-four. If there's no questions, I would entertain closing the public hearing.
Just real quick, the rate is two and a half percent.
Yep.
For ten years.
Very fair rate.
On ten thousand dollars. Close it.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And then item number five, we'll roll into that, is to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero four, approving Maple River Water. System long-term interfund loan.
So move.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
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 Okay. Well, Courtney's coming around. Thank you. All right, next item is to discuss the work comp claim process, um. I asked for this to be on the agenda, um, cause I wanted to, to make sure it's very well clear to every county employee, um, going forward. We did have a safety committee meeting. We did ha- have a safety committee meeting on. One day last week. Last Tuesday. And I want to commend everybody for taking the time and the initiative to. Involve themselves in this process, cause you know, Carroll County as a whole, our goal is to make this a safe work environment. Not only for elected officials, department heads, but for the staff as well. Um. The starting process, we are going to, what I'm looking for today, I don't know if everybody had time to take a look and read the work comp claim process. Ideally, we would like to have, um, flow and everybody do the exact same process throughout the county. And the process, it, for work comp claim is very time sensitive, so item number one, notify your immediate supervisor of an incident as soon as possible. Number two, contact county nurse. And these, um, the number is on there, and the most important step needs to be done regardless of sensitivity. Even if it needs to be done by somebody, someone else depending on the injury. The basic information can be given. The claim stated, the steps alerted, all parties that will be involved in the claim process. Three, seek treatment. And this right here states A, B, and C. Um, St. Anthony's Regional Hospital ER, Manning Regional Hospital ER, McFarland Urgent Care. Item number four. Immediate supervisor, please fill out the employee investigation report and email to Amy Ferniting as soon as possible. And also include any documentation you may have available. And at the bottom of this, it also has Amy Ferniting's, um, email, office number, and cell phone. Going forward, I know Zach went around and handed these out to every department head and elected official's office. This is the policy and procedure that we need to replay or to follow. And there's going to be steps that follow this as well as we navigate more into this, um, safety committee. We are going to probably implement, I know we're giving ourselves a month to go through, and I started researching this a little bit. To go through the safety guidance manual and highlight and change anything that we need to do. Um, obviously, you know, in the past, this probably hasn't been organized or done properly to the level that we can do. I, I fully believe in all of our elected officials and department heads. So going forward, today, we're just look, taking a look at this. I just wanted everybody to make sure that we are all on the same page. And going forward. Next month, our homework was to go through the safety manual guidance and we will be making any changes that don't. Maybe necessarily belong in Carroll County or updating it so that we have more policy and procedure and everybody is following the same thing. And from there, once we get this updated and our county attorney and our HR department takes a look at this. We're hoping to implement this with every employee that they have to sign off of this. It could potentially become a part of an employee handbook. But, um, getting signatures from everybody and making sure that it follows through. That was part of my. Committee report, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody's well aware that we are moving forward and it is in the best interest of Carroll County. Because OSHA has stated that we needed to have a better streamlined process and that it goes through one person and documentation as well, so. That's all I have for that. I don't think I need a motion. This has already been decided by.
And this has been all provided to all the department heads.
Correct. And it's the huge part of this as well, is we are part of an insurance group policy with IWMCA. And to still receive the benefits and discounted insurance rates, we want to be a part of that group. If we're ever pulled out of that group or told we couldn't be a part of that group, um, we would see a huge increase in our insurance rates, so. That's all I have on that. I don't really need a motion. I just wanted to make everybody very well aware. Um, item number seven is manure and, manure management annual updates. Get to that. We have two of them. Hinner Site, Section One, Lincoln Township, Ottoman County. Change crop rotation or optimum yield, use manure analysis. Then we have Smith's Brothers LLP. Is that LLP? I just wanna make sure that, okay. Section three, Sherdan Township, change crop rotation or optimum yields and used manure analysis and where to committee reports.
I can go first. Uh, last week I had a meeting on Tuesday with the city mayor and the city manager about the two mile with Steph. Be working on more of that this week before their, let's see, when is their? And then on Tuesday at noon, I had the Board of Health meeting. And this week I have nothing on my radar. Thank you.
Last week, Tuesday, I attended the same safety meeting Stephanie spoke about, and it was, uh, actually a productive meeting. Um, Wednesday, I did speak with the Glidden City Clerk about their two miles zoning agreement that they have with the county.
Hey, would they, can you go and def- not at all?
Um, yeah, they don't have any, and they don't have a building inspector, they don't have any enforcement, they just measure the setbacks. And you can call Brooke and talk to her. Pretty simple process. Um, Thursday, I did attend Evolution of the Heartland in Toon Rapids, which included a tour of the poet plant down there. Debbie Durham was the lunch speaker. And she's Iowa Economic Development Authority Director. Friday, um, Jamie from the ambulance and I met with Emily, who is a, um. A staff person for Randy Finstra, and that was a follow-up from Access DC, very good conversations. So we'll see what happens, comes out of that. This week tomorrow, um, at noon is presentation meeting at CCGP. Wednesday, it may not be county related, but Trish Roberts is retiring from St. Anthony Hospital. And then Saturday, the Manning House Barn has the twenty-five year anniversary Oktoberfest activities. And at one PM, they're airing the story of Manning Documentary, which they've been working on for several years.
Okay, I can go. Last week I had the safety committing on Tuesday. And then I also met with the city, uh, manager and. City Mayor with Mike as well. And there was a lot of correspondent emails with the county attorney and another issue. I did go down and take a look at M sixty-six. It has come along really well. And then I had a conversation with Marty Halber as well, uh, for a future project potential in Carroll County. This coming week, I am going to attend Trish Roberts Retirement Party, and I do plan, um, making appearance down in Manning for their.
Oktoberfest, twenty-five year house bar anniversary.
But as far as official meetings, there is none yet.
Yep. Okay, I can go next. Uh, Tuesday, I attended the Crisis Service of Mental Health up at St. Anthony's. Uh, and then Tuesday night with Policy Council. Wednesday, um, we had the Rolling Hills Board Meeting and, uh. There again, we, we discussed that earlier, that was probably the main topic. Uh, we did have, uh, some contract changes with one vendor and also. Um, they had a discussion again in regard to the HHS Behavioral Health Realignment, um. RFP update. I think that there's, um, going to be the two. The region we're currently in and the one to out of. Potawatomi are trying to put a proposal together, uh, that I know of right now. I know of one other firm that was going to put one in and they have decided not to. Uh, because of a lot of the unknowns. Um, then Wednesday I did do a BRE visit with, uh, Arcadia Co-op and then visited M sixty-six. Uh, they, the contractor was out of there already on Wednesday. And then Thursday, I did my last BRE visit in, at Temple and Ride. And these BRE visits are business retention visits that are for CCGP that we do for Mid-America Energy. Uh, then on Thursday, we had new opportunities board meeting. Went through our financials and everything like that, did some, uh, fiscal policies and procedures updates. And human resource policies and procedures updates. One of the big things that we had a discussion was there, that we were granted a thirteen oh three construction application. And one-time funding of four point two. Four million two hundred and thirty-nine thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars to re- to build a brand-new Head Start facility in Waukees, Iowa. Uh, we have, we have a high need for more classrooms down there. And we were granted that through the federal government. Had a report on the school readiness program summer for Head Start. And, uh, one of the other things we did is we are looking at the changing of our insurance with new opportunities. We were, um. Having issues trying to get insurance again, uh, that fires constantly haunting us. And we are going to go through a di- different agency that will, that act, only deals with nonprofits and action agencies and stuff like that. They're gonna save us about sixty thousand dollars. Um, this week I have, um, on Tuesday, I have new opportu- new opportunities, book, new, uh, board member orientation. For new board members that we're bringing on board. And then also on Tuesday, the CCGP Board Meeting. Oh, and one thing, one thing I looked at this. As I said, wait, my week was going last week. Friday night I was given this letter that I had yous all read. This is a letter that the city of Arcadia. Is sent into this individual in regard to a evergreen, they think that is causing a obstruction of visibility. On M sixty-eight and Center Street. I was told that the city is sending this letter and that they were told. That our engineers said that we should send a letter like this also. Now, first of all, I am not gonna sign, I will not recommend that we even consider this letter. Because of the implications that someone, and doesn't say who, someone will provide a new tree or move it at their cost. Which I do not want to be part of. I was not able to get a hold of Zach Anderson until this morning on the way up here. Zach said he never said that. He did say that there was a possibility of the visibility, but it is. And that what I told these people Friday night. It's outside the twenty-two center feet of our jurisdiction. And Zach said, agreed with me, and he thinks we just, we need to keep our hands off of it. So that is my recommendations board. That's why I wanted you to read this prior to this. Uh, but this is the letter that the city of Arcadia sent him to him, and they thought we as a county should also send one. I do not, I do not agree with that.
Yeah, I had two questions and you answered one. It's not in the right order.
Right.
Okay, that it's, it's not our bellywake.
Yeah.
And then, and then it is a city issue. Why are they trying to drag the county in just because of M sixty-eight?
Well, it's, it's, it's also part of this, the problem is, I think there's trees. Where they're gonna put their path at. I think that's the other.
Oh.
You know.
Yeah, it's a city.
It's a city.
City issue.
Okay.
That's my week.
You're sticking to it.
Um, my week, I had radio paper. Uh, Tuesday, I attended Board of Health with Mike. I won't regurgitate any of that. Um, and then on Thursday, we had, uh, EMA E nine one one meeting. Just a couple of real quick things to fill you in on. Um, there's a new dispatcher that is hired. Been through the training process. Um, they have a backup, we had quite a bit of discussion about a backup Alamo server. This is the mobile server that goes around for potential hazards and mitigation. And, um, we had just a discussion about that. Uh, they, they have budgeted thirty thousand dollars. There is a new and improved system that's available for thirty-nine thousand dollars. And we're gonna do a little bit more homework on it. I doubt that we would amend the budget. Um, but if they move in that direction, this will probably come after I'm no longer there. Um, but I, the, the better solution is a more longer term, more viable solution. But I would see that they'll probably budget for it next year. Um, kind of a cool thing, uh, they need a new dispatch furniture. Our current dispatch furniture is twenty-four years old. Um, and then they were able to acquire three positions from Potawatomi County. That are just five years old and got them for free. So I like, I love, love the price. Yeah, you had a little something to do with that? Good job. Um, and then, see, E, E nine one one, oh, E nine one one, gonna take it up with state legislature this year, but it needs updating. You know, we're currently getting. What, yeah, we're, we're getting a dollar now per cellphone, you know, landlines essentially gone away. Um, and they're proposing to increase it to a dollar twenty-two. And it seemed to have the support of the board. Um, but the state legislature is also looking at more of a scoop. Of it as well, so we go up the price, the state gets it all, and we don't benefit anything. So maybe to have some discussion, uh, it's an election year, so we'll have ears available to us, so. Uh, that pretty much covers the EMA E nine one one, and I have no official committee reports this week.
He sent that in the invite out to all of us.
I noticed that.
At that point in time, I was.
It was like five thirty that night.
And, well, and I think he fat fingered something because he was supposed to send it out before he went on. And that's why I missed it, at least on Monday, cause it went into a different file that I don't always check, Dalton.
Oh, the border supervisor's joint file?
Yeah, it might have been there, I just didn't see it, cause it wasn't in my inbox, so I caught it and fast enough to get there. But he was supposed to send it out before he went on vacation and didn't, and noticed it was still in his outbox. So he sent it out and it went to all of the board of supervisors, so I probably should have told you I got it covered, but you probably knew that I would, so. Anyways, it was all good.
Courtney, uh, what do you have for next week?
Uh, nothing.
Okay. Any comments from those in attendance? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion.
He beat me again.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, word adjourned.